One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much for that. We don't have anyone signed up to speak to the call to the public, and so we'll move forward on our agenda to presentations. I'd like to invite Cameron Cohen, General Manager of IPA, to present to us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As the mayor said, my name is Cameron Cohen. I'm the General Manager for the Intermountain Power Agency. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and spend a few minutes with you tonight, give you an update on the IPP renewed project. Dirt is moving, construction has begun, so we thought it would be a good time to come and give you an update on the project. Go ahead. Just want to start a little bit with the background. Maybe many of you aren't familiar with the organizational structure of IPA, how it was formed and organized. It was organized originally in 1977 by 23 Utah municipalities, formed as an interlocal. In fact, it's the very first interlocal entity in the state of Utah, and several others have been formed since then. Of course, one of those 23 cities being Keesville City. Each of the Utah representative, each of the Utah municipalities selects a representative to represent their municipality in the project. Keesville City's representative is Bruce Raebi, as you may know, and he also serves on the Board of Directors for IPA. Out of the 23 representatives, there's a seven-member board elected, and again, Bruce serves on that board. We really appreciate him. He's an engaged board member. We appreciate the time that he spends for the project as well. And IPA, those 23 Utah cities, are the owners of the Intermountain Power Project. And that project consists of a large generating facility in central Utah in Millard County, two transmission systems that run the northern transmission system that connects out just into eastern Nevada, and the eastern leg of that connects to Mona, and that's where the Utah representatives get their power. That's where they take deliveries at Mona. And then the southern transmission system that runs to Southern California for the benefit of six Southern California purchasers. Very large generating facility. It was built specifically to gain economies of scale. Utah cities saw a need for power. They reached out to Southern California entities that would need more power, so you could build them big. And as you can see, serving 1.5 million households, that's very, very large units. On the next slide, just has a map of all the participants in the project. The Utah cities ranging from Logan in the north to Hurricane in the south, kind of following along the spine of the Wasatch. There are six rural cooperatives in Utah and some surrounding states. And then you can see in Southern California, the six municipalities in Southern California, the largest of which being Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. So in addition to the IPA board, there's a second governing committee that is tasked with making decisions for the project. And for things to move, it requires both of those entities, the IPA board and the other group called the Coordinating Committee, to pass measures. The Coordinating Committee, it is, all the participants in the project have a voice in the Coordinating Committee. And that is based on entitlement shares to the power. So all of the power is sold to all of the participants, and each participant has an entitlement share in the project. And on the left, you see those entitlement shares represented, largest being Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, 48%. Collectively, the Utah municipal cities have 14% in the project, as well as cooperative purchasers have 7%. So combined, Utah entities have 21% in the project, and that's actually a really, really key number. Because at that coordinating committee level, for anything to be approved or passed, it requires an 80% vote. And so with Southern California cities having 79%, you can see it does require the cooperation of both ends of the transmission lines for anything to happen at the project. And that's worked really, really well over the life of the project. It's required, it's facilitated a lot of cooperation amongst the purchasers to get together, find out what will work for all participants to move things forward. On the right-hand side, you see the benefit of another contract that the Utah cities have, which is called the Excess Power Sales Agreement. So the Utah municipalities and the cooperatives also have an agreement with certain of the Southern California cities where if the Utah cities do not need the power, if it's not economic, doesn't fit into their resource plan on any given season, they can lay that power off to the Southern California cities and not pay a cent of the cost of that power. And it's been a massive benefit to the Utah cities over the life of the project. And most of the power has gone to Southern California because it hasn't been an economic need for the Utah cities. I will say this, last summer, during the summer season, all of the Utah cities did recall some percentage of their power because of other resources that, for lack of a better word, drying up. A lot of hydro hasn't been available. So during this last summer season, the Utah cities did recall some of their power. And to a great benefit, it saved a lot of money, actually, because power that they would have had to buy on the open market was really, really expensive. So again, it's been a huge benefit because some have described it as power food storage. It's there if you need it. If you don't need it, you don't pay a cent of the costs of the project. I'll kind of move through the next couple of slides fairly quickly. It has produced substantial economic benefits to the state and the local economy there in Millard County between salaries and large amounts paid to fuel supply providers and transportation. It's been a big benefit there. On the next slide, also, something that's unique, IPA is considered what's called a taxed interlocal entity. Most interlocal entities are not taxable entities, but at the very beginning, that's how it was structured and organized, that IPA would be a taxpayer. So we've paid a substantial amount of taxes over the life of the project. You can see some of those here. So you have basically surrogate types of taxes that were agreed to, a fee in lieu of ad verum tax, a grocery receipts tax rather than an income tax. So we've been a large taxpayer in the state of Utah and never received any tax incentives. We don't receive any taxpayer dollars, not a penny. We don't, we're not a tax receiver, we are a taxpayer. And I should have said at the beginning, you're more than welcome to stop me and ask questions anytime in the wrong way, so.
What was the French, maybe Nick could tell us what the French?
Ad verum?
Yeah.
It sounds like, I mean, Star Wars, right?
Is that, yeah, well, more like Game of Thrones or something.
I'm not sure exactly what.
You don't know what it means?
Be in lieu of that, I'm not sure. But it's a property tax. So again, we've had the benefit of all of our purchasers since the mid-'80s. The generating units have been operational since the mid-'80s. But certainly, the political climate change, certainly in California. The California Senate passed Bill 1368, I believe, in 2006, that limits the types of generation California entities can receive. Our contracts are grandfathered in. The current contracts with all the purchasers expire in 2027. So all the purchasers can continue to receive their IPP power through the current contracts. But it did present a problem. What would we do after 2027? And it prompted a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion. They, we'll see in the slide, a little bit down the ways, but one of the options really is just if this project ceases to exist. If the California cities can no longer receive that power and weren't willing to do something in its place, similarly, if any of you have been down by Lake Powell, you remember the Navajo Generating Station, the large smokestacks down there by Page. It's gone. It is completely gone. It's a very similar type facility, different or similar purchaser group, age, and it's a flat spot in the desert now. And that was a possibility here for IPP, but it was important to the IP board and fortunately to Southern California participants as well, to find something that would work in replace of the coal generation. There wasn't substantial effort made to find off-takers for that coal generation. And largely, given their size and just how big they are, there wasn't any entities that could take that, that could take those units. And again, there's some of the constraints of transmission, right? Transmission is very difficult to permit and build, and so with transmission paths available, again, it was, there just wasn't a market for that power. And then the other regulatory obstacles would add substantial costs to the existing coal units to continue to operate. So again, here you see a picture of the Navajo Generating Station on the right. Again, it's gone, and fortunately, we had, participants of this project had the desire to find something that would work. And hence, the IPP renewed project arose from that. So it was decided in 2017 that in come 2025, the coal units would be decommissioned. New, in its place, new natural gas generating units would be built with a capacity of about 840 megawatts. So obviously downsized, and that's just based on purchaser needs. Everybody has to do their own, every city does their own resource planning and submitted their, what they needed from this new project. And so it was sized to 840 megawatts. All cities had to amend their current contracts to allow for generation using natural gas. And then subsequently, renewal power sales contracts were signed by just about all the cities. There's a few cities that did not renew. There's three in Southern California that did not renew and two Utah municipalities that did not redo. Everybody else did. The renewal contracts have an expiration in 2077, so it extends the life of this project for another 50 years, which again, will be, continue to be a great economic benefit for that area and purchasers themselves. And it's important to note that with the renewal power sales contracts, that excess power sales agreement, it's a new agreement with a different name. I won't bore you with the name of the new agreement. But basically, those provisions are essentially the same, where the Utah cities can recall the power when it's needed, when it's the most economic option, and when it's not, that power can be laid off to, in the renewal period, just Los Angeles, and they bear all the costs for the project.
So when we lay off power, we don't necessarily get anything, but we don't have to pay anything. Is that it? Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
Can I ask you, I guess, why would we lay it off? I mean, it seems like we oftentimes are purchasing at peak. When we're purchasing the peak power, I know that it costs us more money on the market. Is it just because it's still more expensive to, or still less?
Yeah, the only thing for a short amount of time, sometimes, we did take all we could from IP leases on our share, we had all of them.
We took all, the whole amount?
As much as you could. There are some nuances of the way the recall can happen with, during different seasons. And that's part of, maybe what Bruce was getting to, the recall is, are split into summer season and winter season. So you're not able to recall for just a day. You'd be recalling for a season, which is, you know, March to September, September to March.
Yes, yeah, exactly. So we need it just short amount of time, sometimes, so we want to pay for it, we don't want to invest it here.
Great.
So let's see, we are, yeah, go ahead. I think we've already talked here. If you want to skip to the next one. So the renewal, again, I mentioned the renewal contracts, expecting over $2 billion of investment, probably, maybe approaching closer to $3 billion total investment that will build the new natural gas facilities, as well as an upgrade to transmission system. And in addition, the natural gas units will be capable of co-firing 30% hydrogen when they become operational in 2025. So there's also a hydrogen component to this project with the goal to move towards 100% hydrogen by 2045. And again, that's based on California issues. They have what I would consider, it's probably not a mandate, but a very strong goal to be carbon-free by 2045, which is going to be difficult, but that's what the utilities are tasked with trying to accomplish. So the, in accompanying the renewal project, there are affiliated developments that are happening to facilitate the hydrogen development. There's a group called ACES, Advanced Clean Energy Storage, that, there's a very unique feature down by the plant site. Not just by the plant site, literally underneath the plant site in Millard County. It's a large salt dome, very large, by two miles by one mile type large, where they can solution mine out the salt and store different products. Currently, there are a few caverns already made down there, and they're storing propanes, butanes type things. But they'll also be able to store hydrogen in these salt caverns. So you may be aware, when you build renewable resources like wind and solar, you kind of have to overbuild that infrastructure. And there are lots of times during the day where you have more than you need, and they basically have to shut it off or curtail it. So what we will be doing is taking that excess renewable power, creating hydrogen through electrolysis, and then being able to store it in the salt caverns, becomes a large battery. As you may know, existing batteries, lithium ion batteries, have very short duration. They can maybe give you eight hours worth of power or something like that, right? Whereas storing hydrogen really can shift that energy, not just hours, but months seasonally. So that's an exciting development. There's still a lot of work to do there, a lot of technology that needs to catch up.
They're still all in Mona?
It's in Delta, just north of Delta. That's right. Our transmission system goes over to Mona, but it's just north of Delta. So we're building the new generating units right next to the existing units there in north of Delta. So again, day one, 70% natural gas, 30% green hydrogen. ACES is already moving dirt as well. They're already drilling down to create new salt caverns. And IPA has already issued the first tranche of financing for the natural gas units. We issued $800 million worth of bonds earlier this year, and ACES also has received DOE funding for their project. So when we talk about hydrogen, you'll hear a lot about different colors of hydrogen. There's actually, I've heard maybe upwards of 12 different colors of hydrogen, and that just speaks to how it's produced. Obviously, hydrogen is hydrogen, but currently, the most common color of hydrogen is gray hydrogen. It's created from steam methane reformation of natural gas. That obviously has still a carbon component to it, so to create blue hydrogen, you would capture the carbon. What we're proposing, what we will be using is green hydrogen, which is taking water and through electrolysis, splitting it into hydrogen and oxygen and storing hydrogen. There is a lot of concern about water. Obviously, water is a big deal in this state naturally. So there's a lot of concern about when we talk about using water to create hydrogen. Golly, how much water do you need for that? I had the same question, and surprisingly, it's not as much as you'd think. It's about 2,500 acre a year to supply 100% of the hydrogen or to burn 100% hydrogen at the plant site, which is... We will actually be using substantially less water after our conversion project than we are right now. IPP has water rights, you see, to 45,000 acre feet. Originally, the project was planned with four units, four generating units. Before construction started, it was downsized to two units. So even peak usage, it was about 25,000 acre feet, and that was when these units were humming at just about full capacity. And currently, we're only operating at about 50% capacity, maybe probably less than that. So right now, we're using about 12,500 acre feet a year. And once the project is complete, including the shift to 100% hydrogen, we'll be needing about 9,000 acre water, 9,000 acre feet of water annually. So it's a large water-saving project as well. Everything that IPP doesn't use, all the water that isn't used on the annual basis gets leased to agricultural users in the area. So all of the water is beneficially used. So here are just a couple of pictures of construction that is currently taking place on site. On the left, that's actually the large drill rig that's being used by ACES to drill down to the salt. It's probably about 2,000 feet underground where they're drilling to, just to get to the salt, and then they start solution mining it out. And then on the right-hand side, that's some of the subterranean work that's being done for foundation work and installing conduit and things of that nature. So again, it's an exciting time, a lot of work that's going on right now. We still have bonds to issue over the next couple of years. It's still a very active financing project. So just a few of the key features, that layoff structure that the Utah cities have is a huge benefit. And again, you're able to lay that power off without paying a penny and get a world-class facility. I'll say this, as it relates to the hydrogen, the Utah cities currently are not considered hydrogen purchasers. Until you elect into that program, Utah cities all have contracts for natural gas power. And so if that doesn't become economic, but natural gas is, you get to receive power at natural gas prices. That's part of the current arrangement. But who knows what the future holds? If it does become economic, if it does become important for your city to receive that type of power, you're able to basically opt in to that program. And you can see some of the other conclusions. I think you'll have access to this slide presentation.
Be nice.
So, yeah. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a few questions.
Councilmember Jackson, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm just really curious. So this summer, we, it sounds like we took power back from California. What's the outlook? Because next summer could even be worse with water, lack of water.
And I would defer to Bruce, and each city kind of has to make, along with UAMPS, have to make those decisions on a seasonal basis. But talking to most of our purchasers, that's the expectation that each summer, Utah cities will be recalling power.
Because it's getting pretty scary with the water levels. And it's going to take some time for those to get back up. And so just curious, the long-term outlook on that?
Yep, and it's there. It's there for you. And those, again, those seasonal decisions are made about three months ahead. So next summer, or come December, the Utah cities will make their elections known whether they will intend to recall in March. And I would expect that.
So can a city, can a city recall power at any time, or?
Again, there are a couple of different components to the recall. There's a long-term recall, and those notices have to be made 18 months in advance. But then, as you approach that season, you can, it's kind of a hedge. You can say, in 18 months, yeah, we want this much power. Then as you get close, you can, in essence, lay that back off, say, no, we don't actually need it. But then, on a seasonal basis, the Utah cities collectively can recall up to 50 megawatts. So you could just...
How much lead time would they?
The 50-megawatt recall is a three-month lead time.
Three months.
And again, all Utah cities recalled everything that they could on that seasonal basis. There are a handful of cities that have, on the long-term recall, indicated that they do want, they will want that power, which is a wise thing to do, because then they always have the opportunity, as the season gets close, to say, oh, never mind, we don't actually need that, and put that back. So I want to say, the seasonal recall is up to 50 megawatts. That's aggregate for all the Utah cities. With, combined with some of the long-term recalls that have been selected prior, Utah municipalities collectively recalled about 90 megawatts, I want to say, which is still well below their total 14%. It does take a little bit of building up to be able to receive the full 14%. So there, yeah, there's some nuances to the way that recall works.
I'm also really curious. So the California Senate Bill 1368, for California to want to be completely carbon-neutral by, what is it, 2045?
2045 was passed. 1368 set a greenhouse gas standard. And then subsequently, there was SB 100 that was passed maybe about four, five, four years ago or so, that sets the 2045 standard.
How does that affect you? Because, so if they decide they don't want power from us, if it's, if it comes from coal or different things like that, is that going to hurt us? Because to me, it seems like it would hurt California more.
Yeah. Well, fortunately, again, their current contracts are grandfathered in, so they're allowed to continue to use, to take the power that we're generating coal power. And the natural gas power is also acceptable.
For how long are the contracts?
2045. So the natural gas fits under their 1368 standard, the greenhouse gas emissions standard. So post-2027, they can receive natural gas power. The SB 100, the 100% goal, is by 2045. So they can receive natural gas power up to 2045. And that's the idea, to phase the hydrogen generation to 100% by 2045.
And if they decide they don't want to work with us anymore, do we have other neighbors? Can we, or do we have like power lines that can go down the Arizona大道?
Obviously, we had explored, but we saw with the coal generation, there was not an appetite anywhere to receive that power. But fortunately, we do have contracts that are take-or-pay contracts, that, which means, even if you're not taking power, you have an obligation to the fixed costs of the project. And so, and I'll say this, this project site is very, very important to them. The generator, the transmission system that runs to Southern California has a capacity for 2,400 megawatts. The current facility can generate up to 1,800 megawatts. So there's already additional capacity on those lines, and there are already renewable resources that are flowing down those lines. And when we convert to the natural gas, that is an 840-megawatt unit, that frees up even more capacity on that line that goes to Southern California, but they intend to wheel more renewables down, maybe wind from Wyoming or other solar developments that really are online in the vicinity. So that transmission system is actually a massive asset that I don't think they want to see go away, and they want to keep access to, and they're committed to this site, and they're committed to the community, so comfortable that we have. Any other questions?
Councilmember Adams, thank you.
What is, explain your relationship between UAMPS and Intermountain Power Agency.
I call it maybe a sister organization. We don't have a direct affiliation, but all of the cities that are IPA members are also UAMPS members.
Yeah, there's no scene on the map. It looked like it was pretty, so, but...
It's not direct correlation, but like I said, all 23 Utah cities are UAMPS cities as well. So we don't have a direct relationship with UAMPS.
Okay.
It's just kind of a sister organization with common interests, I guess you could say.
And then my other question is like, you know, while this has been super informative and very cool to hear about, like, my question would be like, why you would present to us more on the, like, what does this body have to do with you in the future? What decisions do we make that affect you?
That's a good question. I think there's a lot of interest in this project, and I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what this project is. A lot see this only as a, it's a California project. It's, everything's dictated by Los Angeles, and Utah cities don't see benefit from it. So sometimes, there is some scrutiny that we fall under in that regard. So I think it's really important for Utah cities to understand their involvement in this project, the benefit they receive from this project, because there could be things done potentially that harm the project, that in turn harm the city's access to this resource. So we think it's important for, again, elected officials in each of our cities to understand the benefit that your city receives from the project.
And Bruce, you had a comment, kind of in relation?
Because in the past, the council has had to approve those documents and those contracts. So if it changes, it'll have to come back to this body also.
Great. Thank you. That helps me understand why.
Thank you. Anyone else? No questions? All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate your time. All right. Any conflicts of interest to declare? No? Okay. All right, let's move on to item B, or item five, consent items. Approval of amendments of October 20th, 2022, and acceptance of UDOT grant funds for Crestwood Road project. Do we have any discussion on these? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Hunt?
That we approve consent items A and B.
Thanks. We have a motion to approve. Comments?
I'll second.
Second? Okay. All right, Councilmember Blackham?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, let's... All right, let's move on to our work items. Item six, a discussion about inter-fund transfers. I'll turn the time over to Shane for a minute here.
Oh, couldn't figure out what that was. Thanks, Mayor. The, at the last meeting, the council gave staff direction on, regarding the purchase of a fire truck with some use of power funds. And before the end of the fiscal year, we'll make the requisite notices and do all the things we need to do internally to make that transfer happen. And I think the purpose of this item today is just to gauge the interest from the council in further discussion about making transfers, especially from the power fund or intergovernmental transfers. And we wanted to make sure, if you had questions, that we had the right people in the room, and we invited Levi and Dean to attend today if there are questions. And we're just looking for direction, if we want to do something now, if we want to wait and do something as part of the budget process. To do nothing is always an option, so just, we're looking for maybe some further direction on, on the increased use of power funds in transfers or not.
Thank you for that, Shane. Just as a follow-up to that, we've had some discussions last council meeting, and I think that there was an interest in doing this. I think that some of the questions that we've had during the week is, and that's why we invited Dean and Levi here, is just to kind of explain us the expectations and the needs for the Power Department moving forward, at least for this fiscal year. And then the process, what we want to make sure we do, I know as a council, is be as transparent and, and just communicate the intention and the plan moving forward. And I think, I think it was also very important to us to make sure that we didn't transfer any money until, until a decision was really made, in terms of how best to go forward with it. So, as it now stands, Shane, just to, you know, to refresh your memory, we made a motion to purchase a fire truck, right? And the motion was, Nick, will you restate the motion, so that we can just sort of follow up on that?
Yes, Mayor. The motion, I listened to it, Mr. Scott, I listened to it. The motion was to fund that with general fund or power fund, or power, transfer money from the Power Department if that was possible, and if we, if staff deemed that appropriate.
Okay. All right, so given that, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear. We do have the option in terms of timing and what to do. So, in order to transfer money from power for this use, there's a process that's in play. Nick, will you explain the process that would be required? Just so we can talk about the timing of it.
Yeah, I think maybe Dean and Levi might know this better.
Dean, okay.
But, but let me just give it the old college try here. We have to send out a mailer to all of our rate payers, and then we also have to have a public hearing and advertise accordingly that this is a transfer that we're going to do. Is that correct? Anything else that we need to do there?
Okay. All right, all right. Should we turn the time over to you, I guess, for questions? So, the other question was, I know as a council, we talked about this, just to refresh our minds on this. We'd made, the motion was made, it was, it passed in order to make the purchase for the fire truck. Let me just make sure I get this right. It's just the timing of it. So, we had a potential savings. Where are we on the potential savings in cutting a check now for that complete purchase? I know that there was, we were kind of confused, is it 20 days and 30 days, and we get the extra $122,000 savings?
We have the savings of 70-some-odd thousand dollars immediately, just from committing to purchase it.
Okay.
And then we will save another 50-ish, 56, in purchasing this vehicle immediately, which we will be doing.
Okay.
Within, yeah, the time allotted that the company gives us.
Okay, because the council directed that, right?
Right.
All right, so the money for the purchase of the fire truck, just so that we're clear, is going to come out of the general fund at this time, right?
No. It...
I think our recommendation would be to, the council's authorized the purchase.
Okay.
We will execute the purchase and pay for it with capital project fund money.
Okay.
And then, when it comes time to allocate how we want to pay for it, we will transfer money either from the general fund, or the power fund, or both, into the capital projects fund for the final accounting of that purchase.
Okay, and that will happen next year?
We'll do that.
When we're doing the amendments, right?
It can be done at any time. We think it can be done, you know, in the next...
It could be anytime.
Councilmember Blackham, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I'd just say, we can do that anytime we want to do a budget amendment. Is that correct?
I think our...
As long as we put that on the agenda?
Would be to do it at the time we amend the budget.
And usually, we do that in May, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
May and June timeframe.
Okay, but for now, the check is going to be written this, I mean, before the end of, in the next couple of days?
Yeah.
Right? And it will come from the capital fund. Okay, and there's money in there to do that. Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure that we're all clear on that. Okay? All right, yes.
Can I just make one more point that Dean made that I thought was really good, is we will know so much better at the end of this fiscal year where these, right now, we have a good idea of where the funds are. We could talk about that tonight even, but in May, we'll know how much better the sales tax is done, or how much better the power fund is done.
Right.
So, we'll know more in six months than we do now, too.
Which, I mean, the other thing you'll know is you'll be pretty well underway on next year's budget, so you'll be able to determine what the needs are for the following year, and then still amend this, this purchase.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure we're all clear on the process. Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, just clarification, is that, a check is going to be sent out, is that payment in full?
Yes.
For the fire truck?
Yes.
Because there was some discussion as far as, like, possibly paying for it upon arrival, but then we would pay, what, $53,000 more if we did that?
Right.
And so, we're saving $53,000?
Right, by paying it now.
By paying it full now?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, all right, and that was, go ahead, Dean.
Vander actually gave us till the 18th to...
To actually cut the check? Okay.
With all the discounts.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so the work discussion, then, is just about inter-fund transfers in general. So, we've made the decision to go ahead and buy this truck, and it's great. The money could potentially come from different accounts, and this discussion is moving forward, what we're planning on doing.
The discussion I want to make very clear is, the motion was to include power funds, and I very much, that was part of the motion that was voted on. The fact that it can come later in a budget amendment is fine. It's just a matter of, we've got the money to pay for it now, but eventually, to reimburse that fund based on the motion, that's where the money should come from. I mean, that, that's, that's what the motion was, that was voted on, and that's what was approved.
And Mayor, what I'd like to do is, at the end of the fiscal year, for Dean to report and make some kind of a justification financially, this is what we think, based on the motion, that we should do with this fund and this fund and...
And I, and I want to make it clear, I think this is a great position to be in. I think it's a great position that we have excess monies in some of our enterprise funds, that we can use it for other things in the city. I can't think of a better opposition or a position to be in. I think that's great, that we're able to show a profit in one area of the city and be able to reinvest it into another part of the city.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any comments on this, as we're talking about this? This is a work item. We still want to have decorum, and please wait to be called upon. Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, I, well, I do have a question, because it sounded like the, what you said the motion was, and I apologize, I thought it was going to be a light meeting, and I missed it, and I'm really sad, because I like this discussion. Sounds like, you said the motion was that it was an either/or, and that staff could recommend, but it sounds like what Councilmember Blackham is saying is that it was, has to be, could be.
Yeah, I listened, I listened to the motion, and the motion that was seconded was that it be paid with general fund money, or power funds, or a combination of the two.
So, it was an or? He, yes, it was, and I went back and looked at it, and that's my fault. But I think, as my discussion went further on, I tried to make it very clear that power funds were, but when I did listen to the motion, and Nick's, you know, Nick's exactly right, I did say that. That's not what I really meant, but that's what I said, but I think if you listen to the discussion further on, you'll understand that it was my full intent to have the power funds be part of the payment for that fire truck, but he is correct. I listened to it.
Well, and I think that our, our main goal is just to make sure that we follow the process carefully, and that we're very open and transparent about the process. And so, the discussion tonight is a little bit more in-depth of how inter-fund transfers work, the requirements regarding them, and then we kind of wanted to get some updates on kind of generally where we are, and we really, we want to know kind of the expectations and the requirements, and the money that power will need moving forward, right, as we're making this decision?
Absolutely. Yeah, because, you know, we, we treat all of our, our city finances and budget and tax money, you know, sacred. And at the end of the day, we need to sit up here and try to make the best decisions we can, and, and I think Councilmember Blackham put it pretty well last meeting, our last meeting, stating that, you know, we have excess money in certain funds, and we kind of tie our hands when those monies just kind of sit there. We want to make sure we have adequate money for, for all of our resources, but I like the idea of being very prudent and cautious, and being transparent with the public about this process, but, but also not untieing our hands a little bit, so that we can function properly as a city, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
I guess, in, in thinking on this topic since our last meeting, I kind of came up with some thoughts that I was having, and I guess my feeling towards this is that we, I agree that there, there can be a lot of pros to using it. The thoughts that I keep coming back to are that we should not use power funds until, or unless we have, you know, as we've talked about, properly vetted this out, which I think includes ensuring that our power services are optimal, and that everything is running the way we want, so that, you know, we're saving ourselves money in, in the running of our power company. And also, as we've kind of talked about, vetting it out also means making sure we're taking the proper legal steps in order to be able to use those funds. And I guess, just as some, maybe background, some research that I did, I think Proposition Five, and if anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, occurred in, was it 2013, which was about nine years ago? And it was a citizen-initiated proposition that I think, believe, I think I won, I think it won with a 5 percent margin. And there are a lot of, or, sorry, 57 percent, it was 57 percent voted in favor of Proposition Five, sorry. And I think, for whatever reason, if we view our relationship with, with the citizens of the city as a bank account at the time, I think people felt that, that their trust was, was overdrawn. I think essentially, in voting that way, it seems to me that they were saying, "We don't trust you to use these funds appropriately," and perhaps that can be seen in a different light, but I would be very hesitant to move forward on anything in regards to those funds unless we have deposited enough in our, I guess, if we want to say, bank of goodwill with the citizens, and, and, you know, have we reached that point, I'm not sure. And, and I think in, in future work meetings, we'll be able to figure out, you know, if the power funds are enough to cover the power needs, and, and if we are, are good to go and maybe have that excess that we can use. So, I guess, just moving forward, what I would like to see is that I have a lot of questions with, for, for power, so I don't know if we want to do that, like, in a meeting here, or if that'd be something just to ask the power.
We could have a work session. We can continue to work on this.
Okay, yeah. So, that, and then just making sure we go through the proper legal steps, whether that's, I think we'd be on thin ice, assuming that the new state legislation, legislation preempts our current, our current code, and if we decide that we can move forward on this, and that it would be the right move for our residents, then, then if we wanted to move forward, we would want to do an ordinance change, I guess. Those are kind of the thoughts I've been having. I know it was a little long-winded.
Thank you.
I've been thinking about it a lot.
We have, we all have. Thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, I really appreciate Councilmember Hunt and your comments on this, and, you know, it's been such an important issue for me from the get-go, and in speaking to our power folks and understanding the plan moving forward, I know certain parts of the city, like the King Clarion area, they've had issues. And, but those issues are being, there's a plan in place to start fixing those issues and to improve the power, not only there, but in other parts of the city. And so, I felt very confident in moving forward with the plan to use some power funds because of the, the work that the power folks are doing to fix some of these issues. But I agree with also Councilmember Hunt, that I definitely want everything to be very transparent, and I want to understand how much money we have and in there, and what we can do with the excess, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Well, even, even though you accidentally did it, I'm really grateful you did do or Mike, because I, I think that, I think that we do need to come forward and talk to the people about this before we just do it, in my opinion. I mean, they did vote for us not to do this.
For sure, and just for the record, since you weren't here for the meeting, everyone definitely wants to do that.
Okay.
I think we're all on the same page, as far as making sure we communicate this.
Yeah, because I think the best thing would be to look at the verbiage of Prop 5, and see if we can't come up with a solution of how we can attend to those frustrations, if you will, that the citizens were giving, and address it, because, you know, the way Bountiful does it, for example, we've talked about how they have a meeting at the end of the year, they talk about what's excess in the, in the fund. Everybody can come, everybody can see how much, and then we, they transfer it to, don't they transfer it to the general fund, Dean, or something like that, and?
They transfer 10 percent of the money to the general fund.
Well, and that is a process that, that we would do, we would go through as well. We would, we would send out a mailer ahead of time, have a public meeting, have a percentage, and that's the other reason for not sending out a mailer now, and waiting until we, we look at the amendments that we're going to do for the, for the fund transfers at the end of the fiscal year, so that we can have an exact dollar amount and a percentage, and really be exact with what we're doing on it. But that's a process that we'll follow as well. That's state code.
Yeah, I like, well, I feel much more comfortable doing it that way than just, you know, hodgepodgeing us, like, what we can spend it on, and I think that's what got us in trouble in the first place, was according to Dean, who's said in the past that we had paid for new police officers with power money and their salaries, basically, with power money, right? And that, that kind of threw up some red flags with, with citizens, or maybe rightfully so, that we were looking at spending it on salaries. So, anyway, I think we're on the right track, right?
Councilmember Blackham?
And, and, you know, my comments are that I have always said, "I want to be good stewards of Kaysel City's money," and I've always tried to be very tight and very cheap, the best that I could, but, yeah, look at the Fire Chief Noddy, knows that. But when I see a whole bunch of money that the citizens themselves have been able to conserve and save, because a long time ago, they made a very big decision of having their own power company, because they saw a real advantage to that, and I know people go back and say, "How did Kaysel City possibly go for 20 years without raising their taxes?" Well, it's because they took their reserve power funds and they bought things with it. They used it for capital projects, they did things and they used it, but most of the time, they used it for one-time purchases and didn't do the, like they did with the police officers, where it was the gift that keeps on giving out of the power fund, and so there was a lot of good things that you could do with that. And I, and I don't know any business that doesn't take money where they're making money and reinvest it into the areas where they're not doing so well, in order to keep those businesses running and going, and I just love the fact that we have the ability, we have that money, and we have the option, that we can take that money and reinvest it in our city, so that we can, every time we need extra money, we don't have to raise taxes. It's hard for me to want to raise taxes when we have a whole bunch sitting somewhere, and I understand we have some needs in the power company. I know we got a couple of $2 million transformers that we have to buy in the future, and there's always things, but I just really think that in the big picture of the whole city, and all the monies we pay to our water, our power, sewer, streets, everything, if there's something there that can, we can reinvest back into the city to keep our property taxes at least equal or down, even though Kaysel City, myself alone, did not raise taxes this year, property taxes, my property taxes went up $100, you know, which was about 20 percent. So, I know people want to see us save money, use money as responsibly as we can, and to me, being able to use those power funds for especially one-time purchases, when we do have an excess, is being responsible. I do understand that there's a problem... do understand that there's a process that we have to go through, a public hearing, notifications. We'll do that. We'll make sure we do that. I just want to, I, I, I'm not ashamed at all to say I am willing to take excess funds out of those areas to reinvest in our city.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, what I really do appreciate from the council is that everybody is on the same page as far as being fiscally responsible. We want to be responsible with your tax dollars, like Mike has said, and everybody else as well. And we also want to be transparent in the process. And so, we do have an ordinance on the books that was in response, I believe, to the, to that ballot initiative that we need to address. And so, we, I would suggest that we have another work, another work meeting to talk about that. But we also would like the Power Department to come and present to us. So, at what point would they be willing and, not willing, but able to do that, have enough data to be able to kind of present to us, just to kind of tell us what their upcoming expenses are so that we know where we are?
I think that you could have a conversation about that soon.
Okay. Okay. That would be great. Councilmember Adams?
Yeah. Can I request to, for that meeting, that maybe Dean and Levi come up with what, what was said in the proposition and what their recommendation would be on code or how we could write it such that it would fulfill both needs? The, the chance that we can actually use it for one-time purchases that's restricted somewhat, or something similar to Bountiful or, you know what I mean? I want you to come up with something that we could actually enact that would still, that wouldn't totally disregard what people asked for. Does that make sense?
It doesn't really to me. Bountiful doesn't have anything like this on their books because they just don't have that restriction that they've placed upon themselves. So, I, I mean, if you want, if you're mirroring Bountiful, we would just remove the, the code.
But what were we doing in the past? I mean, we, we definitely weren't doing in the past what Bountiful did, were we?
We, we were. Maybe not exactly the same thing, but, but the same that almost every hour of the day.
Like, we had a meeting, we had a meeting at the end of, at the end of the year and, and said how much and-
Right.
Yeah. So, I think that the issue, and for people who haven't been talking to us this week, there is a state code that was enacted in 2021 that said that inter, inter-fund transfers are allowed, or, or should be allowed, could be allowed. And so, in our, in our state, in our city ordinance, it says that we won't allow them for anything other than administrative and shared costs. And so, that's what we're talking about as far as changing our ordinance. There, you know, there's an argument to be said that the state code update will annul our ordinance. But we want to just make sure that we're very transparent and very clear on the intentions of the city council moving forward. So, I think that there's enough consensus that we change our code and address it. I understand what you're saying. You still want to kind of protect the funds. But isn't that what the notice does, Dean and Nick, is it has to be specific on a percentage, right? And then does it have to be specific on a use?
Yeah. You've always been allowed to transfer money from an enterprise fund to another fund. And that's been the case for decades.
Right.
Over, over the time, there have been different statutes on what the requirements are to transfer money. In 2021, they amended that requirement to make the, the transfer more, more transparent, more stringent, the idea of holding a separate public hearing rather than the hearing as part of the budget.
Okay.
To, to send out a notice to everyone, you know. The requirements to make the transfer are more onerous than they have been in, in the past.
Okay.
But you've always been allowed to, to transfer money. When, when Proposition 5 came into play, the city adopted an ordinance to be, in my view, to be more restrictive than what the state code allowed you to do. And so, I, I believe you need to modify your ordinance in order to, to make those transfers.
Okay.
Our ordinance says it's restricted to direct operations of the electric utility.
Right.
So, we really, you modify the entire ordinance where you define what direct operations of the electric, electric utility really means.
Okay. And in order to make a capital purchase like a fire truck, that phraseology would not, would not work in the ordinance, right?
Can I, can I make one comment?
Councilmember Blackham?
My, my comment is that I, I guess I'm confused at the being more restrictive or less restrictive because I know, and I, and I only got a back, a building code background. It used to be that all cities were way more restrictive than the building codes were. And then the state said, "Uh-uh, that ain't going to happen anymore. We're going to adopt a law, and you're going to adopt the codes, and we're going to adopt it as a state. And when we adopt it as a state, you no longer can be more restrictive than the state law. You have to follow the state law now. If you want to make a change to that, then you have to make an amendment to the law." So, I guess I get a little confused when somebody says that we can be more restrictive in our enterprise fund's abilities to move or take them in and out, because it, in a way, it kind of conflicts of, what my area of expertise has been where it says, "Uh-uh, you cannot be more restrictive than the code anymore because the state adopted the code and it says, 'This is what you will do.'" You know, you can't be more restrictive than what the code said because this is the state code now. This is what, all the rules that everybody has to live by. So, I guess that's where I'm getting confused. So, if I'm wrong there, you know, it'd be nice to get educated on it.
Nick?
So, Councilmember Blackham's right. Often when the state legislature speaks, they preempt, well, how the state can regulate things. The distinction here and the counterargument is that cities, municipalities can often self-regulate themselves. So, I can't go out, if, if the state legislature, for example, says medical marijuana is allowed in the city, in the state, the city can't go out and say, "No citizen in, in the city of Kaysville can, is allowed to use medical marijuana." That's a violation of, of that principle that Mr. Blackham's taught, Councilmember Blackham's talking about. What the city can often do, and I believe this fits better in that circumstances, the, this city, the state can say, um, yeah, you can't, there's a code about nepotism. So, you can't have a person that, a city employee that directly supervises another city employee that are related. Well, the city can come out and say, "Okay, well, we're, as a city, we're not going to have anybody that's related even in the same department as a self-regulation on our, on ourselves." We can make, as it pertains to our own organization, we can make it more restrictive, but we can't make it more restrictive than the state on things like ADUs, accessory dwelling units. We can't come out and say, "Well, the state said this, but we're going to restrict it more than that." But when it, when it concerns our own quote-unquote "business affairs," you can be more restrictive.
Okay. All right. So, that being said, I think you can make an argument either way. I would like to err on the side of caution and update our ordinance. How are you guys feeling about that?
Yeah, that's what I was wanting to hear. I mean, I think having them come up with the, the proposition of what the ordinance would look like, that they would like to see that would make them feel more comfortable.
And accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
And accomplish what we're trying to do. I would like to see that at that meeting or prior to that meeting so that we can review that with the Power Department discussion.
Okay. So, we can bring that back as a work session. Ever, you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Mike?
Sure.
You're okay with that? Okay. All right. So, let's, let's do a couple of things. Uh, let's have a couple more work sessions. Let's invite Power to come. And then would the ordinance work session be a separate work item, or would that be together? What do you recommend?
I, I don't think that would take a lot to do.
Okay.
So, probably could be something we could do in the conjunction of the power.
We could do it together? Okay. All right. Okay. So, what I'm hearing you say, counsel, is that we are, we're comfortable having these discussions and taking action to move forward as if we're going to be able to use enterprise power funds for things other than administrative costs. Pending more information. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. So, let's bring this back as a work item. Thank you. Anything else on this one? No? Okay. All right. Uh, let's go to city manager report and council reports. Should we do that first, or should we, yes? Then we have a closed session?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to do council member reports?
Let's do that. Do we have anything to report, anyone? Uh, Councilmember Jackson?
Um, yes. So, our youth court kind of kicked off last night, and Councilmember Hunt and myself attended. And just so proud of all the kids that signed up to be a part of that and really impressed with them and excited to get that going, to give an opportunity for some of the, those, those kids and juveniles in our community that don't make the best decisions and they can-
But, but need a second shot, right?
Absolutely.
For sure.
So, looking forward to that.
Good. Thank you. Uh, anyone else? No? Okay. I had an opportunity to do a election day with the third graders at one of our schools. So, that was really fun, talking to them about elections. And they understand so much more than I realize, as far as them being little kids. And then we had a great Halloween party. So, thank you for that. Thank you, Councilmember Hunt, for decorating for us and, and, and doing that. That was great. Okay. All right. Do we need a motion for closed session? We do, right? Okay. Will someone like to make a motion to move us into a closed session?
I'll make a motion that we move into a closed session.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
A second? Okay. Uh, council member, just all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. We'd like to excuse anyone who is not participating in that. Thank you.
We staying here? Are we going in there?
I think we're staying here, aren't we?